I'll to order the meeting of Monday, March 23rd, and our first item is oath of office.
You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of city council member.
The duties of the office of city council member.
For the city of Port Huron.
For the city of Port Huron.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Councilmember Amos.
Thank you.
And the court will now take the roll. Soon as she's ready.
Councilmember Amos.
Present.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here.
You have the minutes from the regular meeting of March the 9th before you. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashford. Is there a second to port? Mayor Protem Archibald. Is there any additions or deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have one presentation tonight. If the clerk would please read that.
Proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month will be presented to representatives of the St. Clair County Child Abuse and Neglect Council.
If you'd like to come forward, all of you that are here, and I'll meet you at the podium. I'll let you all introduce yourselves afterwards.
Whereas Port Huron's children are our future, whenever one child is abused or neglected, all the community suffers. And whereas in St. Clair County, 8,424 children were living in poverty, 3,778 children were living in homes investigated for child abuse and neglect, and 577 children were confirmed victims of child abuse and neglect in St. Clair County. And whereas child abuse is one of the nation's most serious public health problems, with studies have been well documented for the link between abuse and neglect and a wide range of medical, emotional, and behavioral disorders, including depression, alcoholism, drug abuse, and juvenile delinquency. And whereas unemployment, poverty, parental drug and alcohol abuse, stress, and social isolation increase the risk for an environment in which child maltreatment can occur. And whereas promoting optimum family functioning, resiliency, adequate social support systems, and knowledge of parenting-child development, all are known protective factors which prevent child maltreatment and help strengthen families. And whereas this month and each month hereafter, the city of Port Huron, under the leadership of the St. Clair County Child Abuse and Neglect Council, pledges the strength of our entire community to prevent child abuse and neglect and not to stand by in silence. Now therefore, I, Pauline M. Rep., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Port Huron, and on behalf of Councilmembers Amos, Archibald, Ashford, Harris, Lewandowski, and Ruiz, do hereby proclaim April 2015 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. And child abuse prevention is an acknowledged community responsibility, and it is our duty to cherish our children and help them grow and develop to their fullest potential. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Pauline.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Rep. Councilmembers, congratulations to the new councilman this evening and City Manager Freed. It is a pleasure to be here tonight, and I am here with our staff. Jamie Alexander, our office manager. Nikki Clive, our family advocate. Ashley Troy, our forensic interviewer. And is that all?
That's it.
That's all. Small staff, big work. Thank you so much for proclaiming April Child Abuse Prevention Month. We appreciate your doing that. We hope that you will notice that during the month of April, we will tie big blue ribbons on all the lamp posts on Main Street. We hope that you will take note of them, all our council people and our citizens, as you drive down the Main Street of Port Huron this month, and take advantage of that teachable moment. Who's ever in the car with you, be it your kids, your family, or even you yourself and you, take a moment to think about kids and their safety and hope that you will support us in our belief that it shouldn't hurt to be a child. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on now to the public comment section of our agenda. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council, now is the time. If they'd like to come forward to the podium, give us your name, and you have four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Diane Bauer. I'm Executive Director for Blue Water Safe Horizons. Blue Water Safe Horizons is a nonprofit social service agency located here in Port Huron, Michigan. Our mission is to partner with the community to provide resources, support, and education necessary for every individual to live a life free from domestic violence, sexual assault, and homelessness in St. Clair County. April also is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. During the month of April, sexual assault programs such as ours and those across the nation are working to focus public awareness on the epidemic of sexual violence and encouraging all Americans to become part of the solution. Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. Rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community, and statistics show that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. Young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages 12 to 17 were two and a half times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. On college campuses, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted. Sexual assault can be a difficult subject to talk about, but we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. When we all play a role, we can prevent sexual violence. The first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. It's time for all of us to take action to create a safer environment for all. Blue Water Safe Horizons wishes to thank the Port Huron City Council and the area residents for their support of our agency and our mission. We ask that you join us and communities across the country in playing an active role in preventing sexual violence. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dick Cummings, Volcom Michigan, and I'm here as a President of St. Clair County FLCO tonight. And I'd like to make the voters out there aware that to get out and vote on May 5th on the proposed ballot proposal for roads, it's a 1 cent raise in sales tax. Organized laborers worked with the lobbyists and the politicians throughout the lame duck session there and tried to come up with a compromise position that would make the roads safer and better for everybody and most economical, even though it's difficult to ask for a tax increase. But anyways, in a meeting two weeks ago in Lansing of all the unions, they have come up with the endorsement of the project. I think those of you that read the Times Herald, there's a pretty good write-up in today's paper, if you haven't read it yet. But we think that's going to be the best for the citizens. A lot of people are talking pretty controversial about it, but we feel if this doesn't get passed, the roads are going to just sit there and keep deteriorating, the roads and bridges for the next year if somebody comes up with a better solution. We feel like instead of putting a 25 cent tax at the pump, which everybody's going to pay for, if at the alternative, if this is what it comes to later on, your groceries and everything concerned, trucking's going to go up as a result of that. But the sales tax, if everybody pays a little bit when they're paying their sales tax, not going to know so much. However, as the industry keeps coming up with more economical automobiles, if you say, electric cars, obviously, if you get a lot of electric cars on the road in the cities and so on and so forth, they're not going to pay for a gas tax at the pump. Also, and I'm not picking on seniors, but I'm saying people use other modes of transportation, buses and so on and so forth. Either they're not direct, they're driving the bus. Everybody's using the highways. And if you're driving Detroit and other big cities like I have quite a bit, roads are really getting unsafe and dangerous. So we recommend that. While I'm up here, I'd also like to say congratulations to the new councilman. I'd also like to thank Bob Clegg. I understand he's leaving, but you know, I think he steered the city and communities through some tough times with the sewer separation. I think he did a yeoman's job. In all the meetings I've been to here, when he's been put on the carpet by the officials, he's always seemed to come up with a good research to answer for the way he made the decision. So I thank you, everybody. Good luck out there. But most of all, I'm a veteran. And no matter what you decide on May 5th, I hope people get out there and vote at least to honor the people that has given us that right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening? If they do, please come forward and give us your name.
Mayor Rep. and council members and all, I just wanted to congratulate the new council member. Mr. Amos is an upcoming young man in our community, and I'm very pleased to have witnessed what you have done and put him on the council. I also would like to say that he has some abilities that you probably don't know about. Those of us who were at St. Paul's Church yesterday found that he could do some dancing. And believe it or not, he was very good at what he was doing. The program was lovely, and the people really appreciated him. You will too. God bless you in your decisions.
Thank you. Do you want to speak? Yep, you just need to come to the podium.
My name is Dave Whitmore. I live in Port Huron. I'm not very good at this, so. I have a complaint about the operation that went on Friday night, and I was wondering how many councilmembers knew that that was going to happen with the helicopters and the police all over and everything.
Well, I will allow our, because it's something that involves the police chief, I'll certainly let him respond to that if he wants to. But I did not know. But I don't believe that anybody was supposed to know in advance. That's the purpose of the whole.
I would think that there should have been some notification given to you from the safety director, wouldn't you?
It's not typical for ongoing police investigations that we give advance notice to our legislative body.
I'm sorry, Mr. Freed. I'm kind of hard to hear in. Could you speak?
It is not typical that we give advance notice of anti-crime operations to our legislative body, let alone do I know, I don't even get those notifications.
That was more like psychological warfare, if you ask me. And I believe it violated people's rights according to the Constitution. And I just want to make you aware that that's not right, and maybe I'm just one in a million, but I'm that little ant's going to stand up for the rest of the people that don't have a voice. And I believe that there should be some kind of investigation into this and possibly firing the safety director. There was a total harassment of the people and a bunch of people that were terrified by that operation. It shouldn't have happened. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Do you want to address it?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, City Manager Freed. I'll address the combined Michigan State Police, Port Huron Police, D-Dax crime sweep that occurred last Friday. There's been several articles in the Times Herald, and there's one today that explained the operation in detail. We made a sweep of the, an area that we've been monitoring crime stats for crimes that are occurring, assault of crimes, drive-by shootings, open-air drug markets, meth houses, wanted parole violators, sex violators, those people that are actually preying on our citizens and causing problems in the community. And we did an operation with the state police. We assisted the state police, and they, in turn, requested their airship as a support model. This type of operation's been done for the last three years in a couple different programs. Operation Safe Streets, Operation D-Dax, Operation Covert. And I made you aware of those incidents, and they were running ongoing for the last three years. This operation will continue through not only the spring, but in the summer and into the fall. We will continue to arrest those people that are violating the law, that are assaulting others, that are running meth labs, that are dealing open-air drugs. I don't believe we violated anybody's rights. We did impair some rights. Those people that were wanted, that were dealing drugs, that were armed, we did impair their rights. We took them into custody. They afforded the legal opportunities that any other American citizen does. But I take great offense when I'm told not to do my job. My job is to protect the citizens of the city of Port Huron and to try to offer viable alternatives to safe neighborhoods. I question, I've got 36 years of experience in this type of work. I appreciate and always will take input from citizens. But candidly, you can't ask us, the police department, to do our job, then tie our hands behind our back. That's not fair to the men and women that serve you and serve this community. Out of this results, there were 273 contacts, a total of 154 traffic stops, 10 people driving with suspended license, two hazardous citations, 13 non-hazardous, 137 verbal warnings. So the whole point of this wasn't a whole lot of traffic tickets, was it? 66 persons investigated, 38 misdemeanor arrests, six felony arrests, one OWI arrest, 17 fugitive felony arrests. So as you can see, we took people off the street that didn't belong on the street. And candidly, I look for your support in future operations, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes. Chief, can you, first of all, I wholeheartedly agree with you. Cleaning up our streets, if they shouldn't be out there, they are a threat to our public and the neighbors and the communities. And that's one of the main things we have to do to make sure that you're doing your job and you have the right tools to do your job. But specifically, can you just address why we don't send out, put up billboards or send out invitations that you be ready to do a sweep?
Sure. Wouldn't be anybody there.
Thank you for that softball. Candidly, the reason that we don't tell those people that are dealing in the open-air drug markets and operating the meth labs and give notice on public TV or newspapers or printed over the radio media is because they tend to stop those operations if they know in advance we're coming. So those wanted people don't stay in the same spots. They're not in the alleyways, they're not out in front of your street. I'll tell you candidly, just prior to this operation, we recovered two handguns that were taken in a drive-by, that were utilized in a drive-by shooting earlier in the week. So if we told people about this operation, that we were going to come out, and you're wanted, and we're going to come out and arrest you, there's probably a good chance that you won't be there when we come, and it'd be a waste of our efforts. I can't think of any operation other than when we offer something for free, like we'll give you a 60-inch TV, and you come down and then we arrest you because you're wanted and you don't get your TV. You know, we could run operations like that, but generally, you don't tell the people that we're going after, that we're coming. But I'm giving fair notice now for the rest of the year. If you're wanted, if you're, you know, doing drive-by shootings, if you're breaking into homes, if you're a parole violator, if you're a sex offender, we're coming. You've had your notice.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening?
Hi. Shane Hernandez, 1423 18th Street, Port Huron. Didn't plan on speaking tonight, but Proposal 1 on May 5th is something I've been working on, very passionate about. I just want to give some numbers on the other side of that. It is a 1 cent sales tax increase, but that is a 16.7 percent tax increase on your sales tax. Along with that is a gas tax increase. We're changing the gas tax to wholesale tax, and it will increase. We also have a vehicle registration fee increase. So when you hear this pitched as a sales tax increase, that's not the whole story. This is multiple tax increases. It's the biggest tax increase in almost 50 years in Michigan. Amounts to somewhere between $1.7 to $2 billion, depending on where you get your numbers from. The bill is so poorly written, it happened in a lame duck session, but it's so poorly written that we're losing our write-offs, our federal write-offs on our vehicle registration fees. That'll cost the people in Michigan an additional $100 million not being able to write those off. I don't think anybody disagrees that roads are a priority. That is, I'm a small government guy. Roads and schools are the priorities. And every legislator we talk to will say roads and schools are a priority. Well, let's make them make that a priority. The budget from the state has gone up over $4 billion in the last four years. If they're a priority, what happened to that $4 billion? There was a bill on the floor in the House that was a revenue-neutral bill, meaning a $0 tax increase, that passed the House. There was a bill on the floor in the Senate that was a $1.2 billion tax increase that passed the Senate. The two sides came together and negotiated. Well, in my book, when you negotiate zero at $1.2 billion, the middle's about $600 million, they came out at $2 billion. That was because they were buying votes, the special interest votes. Only 60% of this money goes to roads. 40% goes to other items, whether it's mass transit, a public school fund, which that's a good thing, but money's already been getting taken out of this public school fund for uses that aren't schools. Earned income tax credit. You can go on the IRS website. Earned income tax credit is the number-one mispayment of federal income tax returns. 25% of earned income tax credit payments are fraudulent. So we're going to give $300 million more towards that as part of a road bill. So I think it's important to know the whole story, the numbers on this. It's a $2 billion tax increase, multiple tax increases, and only 60% of that money goes to roads. There are already alternate plans on the floor of the House and Senate. That's another important thing. Everybody is being told, if this doesn't happen, we don't get anything. There's already alternate plans on the floor, so. I think there's better options out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening? Seeing no one else, our public comment closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, take the vote.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. There's only two items tonight on the consent agenda. One is receiving and filing a copy of the completed 2015 assessment roll. The other is approving the reappointments of Michael Artman, Carl Moss, and Gerald Saunders to the Historic District Commission with terms to expire March 10th, 2018. And with that, we'll move on to, from the city manager, number one.
Is accepting the bid from a WAB machine and welding in the amount of $10,437.15 to replace the existing marine pump-out system at the River Street Marina, with up to 75% of the cost being reimbursed by the Michigan State Waterways Commission.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Yes. Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Under the, did not meet specification, specifically, what was that specification referencing?
Mayor Rep. and councilmembers, the specification in question was twofold. One is the size of a holding tank. We required a very specific size or larger holding tank. They came in with a much smaller holding tank. In addition to that, we required that all of the equipment be enclosed as this is out on our docks and is adjacent to our fueling facility. The other bidder's equipment was all completely exposed. Someone could walk up, touch a wire, and moving parts, and did not serve the purpose for the location that we needed to install.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Are we going to pay them in American dollars or Canadian dollars?
The price quoted is in U.S. dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you. No other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to item two.
Is accepting the bid from Zimmer Roofing and Construction in the amount of $8,412.50 for roof repairs at the River Street Marina.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess my question is, I was expected to have some more information tonight, but looking at the River Street Marina property, I'm just wondering if this is a 10-year fix or 12-year fix, or is it a 20-year fix? By looking at the roof at the Marina building, it needs a complete job. And I think what we saved on dredging last year, we could do the job right if this doesn't do it.
Mayor Rep. and councilmembers, this is an asphaltic asphalt roof, similar to what you would purchase for a home. It is a commercial-grade roofing, so you're looking at a 20-, 25-year fix. That's not to say you'll never have to do any maintenance to it, but it's intended to be a longer-lived roofing material.
Good. Good.
Any other questions for Mr. Clegg while he's up there?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I didn't see the bid for this one, but it didn't require one specific type of roofing like it did the last time. Not on this particular project, but Zimmer got one one time. I think it was Dura something. I can't remember exactly what it was called, but.
Yeah, we're, the bid did specify certain criteria had to be met and to assure that we were comparing apples with apples.
Well, I think, I believe it was for out at the Bancroft Building. They had it in the bid that it was just, it had to be, I think it was Dura Last or Sockin, I don't exactly what the name of the material was. But then another company ended up getting the bid after it went out to rebid because it wasn't one particular type of material.
Yeah, that was an adhered roofing material, yes. And I think I recall exactly what you're talking about. In this particular case, we're talking about asphaltic shingles, and we have a certain grade that is required as a minimum, and they met those specs.
No, that's fine. I get that part. I just want to make sure it wasn't just specific that they were the only ones that could bid on it like last time.
Oh, no.
Because they were the only ones that had that one product name.
No, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. No, it was open to different product lines that met criteria for thickness. No, it wasn't a specific brand.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you. There's no other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Go to item three.
Is accepting the unit price bid from Conan Cement in the estimated amount of $92,923.25 for the 2015 annual sidewalk contract.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
To port.
Mayor Pro-Tim Archibald, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess part of mine would be a question here. We know the success rate of Mackenzie's, and I just wonder what our experience is with the Conan Cement Company, being there's only $530 difference in the two prices, that they were both very competitive.
Mayor Rep. and councilmembers, Conan is actually the contractor who did it last year for us, and we had good success.
Did a great job.
Yeah, they did a good job.
Do you have a question, Councilmember Ashford?
And also, we have a policy, lowest bid, or whatever, you have a standard?
Our purchasing ordinance would require that as long as the vendor shows proof that they can perform, and we can recommend them from that perspective, we go to the lowest bid. There is a local preference language in our purchasing ordinance that permits us to look as long as they're within a certain percentage of the original bid. But I think you'll find that we, in a bidding, competitive bidding situation, in my 16-year career, I can only think of once, and I might be wrong, I can only think of once that we didn't recommend the low bidder, but there was a specific reason for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion questions? Thank you. I think you're done now, you can sit down, and actually stay there. No other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Move on to item four.
The city manager will give a report on solid waste, unfunded liabilities, and a general fund update.
I'll try to keep this short tonight. In conducting my baseline assessment, when I first got here, we addressed some fiscal year operational issues, led to some major decisions, also led to the general fund deficit reduction plan you adopted in the fall. What I wanted to do now was move to 30,000 feet, so to speak, and I wanted to look at some of the larger issues that affect not only our operating budget today, but issues that I believe pose the greatest threat to the next generation. And so that's what I want to talk about tonight. Unfunded liabilities is the first issue we'll talk about. Currently, the City of Port Huron's pension fund is underfunded. I mean, unfunded liabilities, when we explain this, the difference between what we owe for retiree healthcare and retiree pensions versus what we actually have in the bank or in the fund. We are unfunded, our pension fund is underfunded by $54.4 million, and annually, we pay about $3.75 million in payment. That's an increase of 65% from just six years ago, when it was $2.5 million. In the coming fiscal year, it will grow by $300,000. Our post-retirement healthcare benefits, our OPEPs, are underfunded $47.7 million, which is an annual payment of about $3.25 million. Collectively, we have over $100 million of unfunded liabilities, and our annual service on those unfunded liabilities is more than $7 million and growing. To give you an idea of the scope and magnitude of what that payment looks like, here you have our payment to our pension and our retiree healthcare costs in comparison to the entire police department, and to the entire fire department, and the general government itself. It is substantial, and it is growing, and it is consuming more and more resources. If you look, here's projections based on our studies. This is where we are currently at. Factoring in the OPEPs, we are at about $7 million. If left unchecked, this will balloon to almost $12 million before 2029. In 2018 and 2019 alone, we're north of $8 million. So we're talking a growth of nearly $500,000 to $750,000 in just the next two years alone. This is on top of our operational general fund deficit. But we haven't sat idly by, and I want to talk very shortly about what our employees have done. It's been this misnomer that, you know, the municipal job is like the gravy train. And honest to God, that was probably true back in 1970, '80, and '90, but it's not today, and I want to talk about that. We've created really good partnerships with our non-union and our union workers, and our collective bargaining associations. Back in 1998, about 100% of medical services were covered, no minimum co-pay and prescription costs of about $2. That was pretty good. Today, it's not the same. Our employees have about $500 to $1,000 deductibles, they pay 20% co-pay, they have prescription costs that are now $35 and $45. So these are out-of-pocket costs that our employees now make to help reduce our healthcare costs. It's substantial. In addition to that, our employees, it used to be they paid nothing for their pension or retiree cost. Now they pay about 8%, and it's grown every year, and you've seen those numbers. 8%, again, money out-of-pocket from our employees to help address these costs. In fact, our police officers got hit the hardest, about 10% of their wages, and command staff paid nearly 12% of their salaries towards pension cost. All new hires will participate in a healthcare savings plan as an alternate to healthcare in retirement. It began in 2008. Also, our new hires are enrolled in a hybrid pension plan, which lowers the cost of the city, and our public employees will be able to participate in well after the 2011 negotiations. But the partnership with our non-union new employee groups continues an effort to control wage costs, which is the key factor in pension, meaning our pension costs are directly associated with our wages. But our employees have not been getting raises, they've had pay freezes. In 2008, they had a 2%, but in '07, '09, they had pay freezes, and then if you look in '11, '12, and '13, they've had 0% increase in wages. So as inflation has grown, wages have not. But in addition to stagnant wages, our employees are paying more out-of-pocket for their healthcare and more out-of-pocket for their pensions. Now, we did do a 1% stipend last July 1st in the budget, but that was a stipend, it does not go in their wages, so it does not have an adverse effect on our long-term liabilities. So it wasn't a raise, it was a stipend, so it doesn't affect their pension. So our employees have really sacrificed a lot, and I think that's important to highlight, just how much they've done. For every dollar we pay an employee, about 70 cents is added to that dollar for fringe cost. About 34 cents of that 70 cents goes for the current employee's fringe cost, their social security, FICA, their retiree healthcare, their pension, about 34 cents. Of that 70 cents, 36 cents is for workers that are no longer here, our legacy cost. And that number's growing, and had it not been for the sacrifices of our employees, we would be north of 80%, but our employees have had pay freezes, out-of-pocket healthcare costs, reforms in our healthcare and our pensions. And I think that's important, that we highlight that to the community, so we break that perception that somehow these jobs are what they used to be. They are not. In addition to essentially a pay cut, we had in 2,320 full-time employees. We now have about 221, that's a reduction of almost 90 employees, but we're producing the same results, meaning our employees are now doing double or triple the workload. Our services hasn't been cut, but our staff has. As part as the budget process this year, I will ask the council to authorize me to make a $500,000 annual payment in addition to our ARC payment as a down payment on these unfunded liabilities. This will help reduce our OPEPs and unfunded liabilities going forward. But in addition to an additional $500,000 payment this year, we're going to strive to make a $500,000 additional payment for the next 15 years into our pension and OPEB funds. That is $7.5 million of additional cash infused, but compounded annually at an average 8% interest, that's $14.6 million. For every dollar we invest today into the future, the next generation will have $2 of their money to invest in their own future. And here's what that looks like. This is your cash payment. This is the effect on the fund. So investment today will reap huge dividends for the next generation. It's not just about the next budget, I really want to start looking at the next generation. And how do we set Port Huron up so that they have a viable and prosperous future? And that viable and prosperous future must begin today. Another issue we need to talk about is the solid waste fund, the rubbish fund, the trash fund, how we deliver municipal trash. In 2013, we rebid the contract, we were with Waste Management at the time, we rebid the contract and went with Marcot, which saved about $1 million. And this will show you the bid results then, that we had from that bidding, and this is the current contract you are under. But in 2006 and 2007, you had total revenues of about $2.3 million, just under that, and you were running a surplus of about $24,000. So in 2006 and 2007, you had a fund balance of $1.3 million. But the trash fund is supported by a millage, and when the property taxes dropped in '08 and when the economy bottomed out, so did the millage collections, but the cost stayed the same. So you began running operational deficits in '08, '09, '10, '11, and those deficits have ballooned. They were about $126,000 in 2013, and you began to chip away at that fund balance, $1.3, $1.2, $1.1, less than $1 million, $620, $494. Bringing to last year, a deficit of $80,000, you've dropped the fund balance to $400,000. And in this budget year, we will consume another $208,000 of that fund balance to patch that deficit. My concern is next year. We will still have the structural deficit in place, we will eat up all the fund balance, and we will still be left with a structural cash issue of $34,000. What I'm trying to demonstrate is that our municipal trash operations is a broken model. It needs to be reinvented, and that's going to be difficult. But these costs are unsustainable, and these deficits are unsustainable. Here's a little bit of historical expenditures. We used to put street sweeping in the municipal trash fund. We cut that out, and we now allocate that to major and local streets to kind of, as a maneuver to help get us down the road a little bit, but there's really no more room to maneuver. This shows you our actual cash flow, this is where we were at last year. As you can see, revenue's declining, and expenditures have declined with it, so we have been reining in our costs. We rebid it out, saving $1 million. So we have cut costs, it really comes down to the revenue. More concerning is the cash flow projections, and we're projecting that next year, we'll cross that threshold with no fund balance and begin deficit operations in the trash fund. The issue is, is there's no money for a bailout. The general fund can't do it, which I'll talk about next, but we have to reform the way we do this operation. We have to completely reinvent it because there's really no lifeboat coming. There's no rescue boat for this fund, we have to restructure it. In addition to the challenges we already faced, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners approved a $6 per ton fee increase for the dump. The new fee increase for collection service last year was about $33,000. This year, it'll be beyond $66,000 of additional cost. And I want to talk about the general fund, we've talked about this before, but I want to reiterate it. Our general fund revenue has been stagnant, property taxes have been declining, state shared revenue has been declining. Factor that with the cost inflation, meaning the cost for our goods and services that we deliver is going up, but our ability and revenue to meet those goods and services is stagnating or declining. But we've done a good job of keeping costs in line. We've reformed and cut government where necessary, we've kept revenues in line with expenditures, expenditures. This year, we adopted the plan in the fall to address this, which I'm confident we will do, but it's important that people see that we've done our best to, you know, balance our budget like every mom and dad does. I also want to compare that with the inflation rate. We're providing these government services, trying to keep delivering core services while the cost of delivering those services is rising. For 15 years, we have done our best to patch together the general fund. It used to be the general fund would run surpluses of $1.5 to $2.2 million, and we will take those surpluses and subsidize where necessary. My concern is, is that the general fund's barely getting by, and as unfunded liabilities grow, if left unaddressed, that ARC payment has a direct influence on the general fund because the employees have that fringe cost. And so the reason why I talk about these issues together is because they're not independent issues. Their solutions are interdependent upon each other, meaning we're going to have to move forward tackling all three at the same time. It's the only way of doing it, and doing it in a really meaningful way that has long-term results. So what's the point of this presentation? It's very difficult to find solutions, and solutions that are, quite frankly, are going to be transformational. They are going to be completely reinvent how we deliver services, how we look at delivering those services. It's very difficult to have that conversation until we first admit that we have a real problem. So tonight, I want to sound the alarm on unfunded liabilities, the trash fund, which we were briefed on in 2013 and 2014 as well, and now it's 2015 and it's decision time. We have to address these issues. If not, a perfect storm is brewing. Our unfunded liabilities will continue to grow, our general fund revenue will stay stagnant, and our unfunded liabilities will begin to chip away at our ability to deliver core services. So as $300,000 ARC payment grows every year, till it tops out at $12 million, as revenue stays stagnant, there's only one option, and that's a reduction in services. And so I really believe that the unfunded liabilities is the greatest challenge we face, next in line by the municipal trash fund, and next in line by how do we continue to deliver quality core public services from the general fund without sacrificing them to address the other two issues, meaning we can't take the general fund to bail out either one. And the land purchase fund has been committed to continue subsidizing water and sewer rates, so we no longer have that asset available. So moving forward, we have to make decisions. Maneuvering, kicking the can down the road, they're no longer viable options, and we're going to have to make decisions in a very timely manner. So over the course of the next couple of months, I'm beginning, be bringing you proposals, and they're going to be significant proposals on how we deliver these services, because significant changes have to be made to ensure that, one, we leave a viable operating city for today and for the next generation, and to ensure that these unfunded liabilities do not have a deliberating effect, debilitating effect, on our city moving forward, which I am convinced, if left unchecked, they will. Any questions?
I guess more of a comment than anything is, is we've had this brief discussion, is the dump fees that they're charging us now, and at the expense of providing the Canadians the same services at a lower fee.
Fair point. It's one caveat in a larger issue, I agree, and that's what I, we're looking at, the contract we currently have with our rubbish fund has some options in it. When we adopted the contract in 2013, it was built in with a three-year tier, and the last two years had different options you could chip away at. We can have that conversation. There's a whole host of different options we can look at, and I really believe, I believe there are solutions. I don't believe the sky's falling, I believe that there are solutions, but we need to start looking at them and really having the conversation, and that's just one part of it.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Yes, so obviously, you're talking about this gap that we have to close in on, okay? And in this gap, referencing the unfunded liabilities, so you propose that we have to make some decisions on what we need to reduce.
I wouldn't say, I don't always, I don't really think cost savings comes in a reduction of services. No bones about it, that's probably going to happen. We can't afford to continue providing the same level of services, but I think if we get creative and actually look at, not just, how do we look at an operation and say, how can we make this operation better? I think we're at the point where we look at an operation, bulldoze it, and rebuild it from the ground up. How do we deliver this service? And we need to be looking at all these different types of services we deliver and begin step one. We've got to go back to, if we had to start over again, what would we do? And that's the conversation, specifically with the trash fund. If we had to redo our entire trash operations, how would we do that? There's a lot of things we can look at. For instance, we don't regulate totes, we don't regulate how much you can put out, that's one option. We offer recycling to the tune of about $250,000 a year, that's another option. There's all those different things we can look at, and that's kind of one that I wanted to have the conversation tonight, because when I start bringing these options, and some are ugly, and some are better than ugly, and some are really ugly. But when I bring these options, I want you to know the reasoning why, that if we don't address this, you can't run a deficit, that money's got to come from someplace, so we're going to have to cut public safety, parks and recreation, and the general fund to subsidize a deficit because we didn't reform in the trash fund? That's really the cause and effect, there's consequences for inaction, and I don't want to let that happen.
You talk a lot about...
Well, you talk a lot about the unfunded liability and et cetera and stuff like this. What about the revenue? Bringing in some revenue to kind of offset some of this what we're facing?
Our hands are kind of tied under proposal A. Our tax base can't increase more than 5%. We're hopeful that the economy will rebound and income tax will come up and property values will rise. But we need to be real. I mean, we're pretty stagnant since 2008, 2009, 2010. And so we need to take the projections we have and go realistic. If we're not going to get any more revenue, what does it look like? Or modest growth revenue, 1% to 2% growth. Even if we have 1% to 2% growth, our costs are exponentially, exponentially outpacing that.
But we don't know the pulse of the economy, you know, going forward. I mean, that's always a major risk factor. So you, you know, so half of what you're saying, and at the same time, you're asking us to fly high about tomorrow, and we need to worry about the current state.
I agree. I believe that our next 12 to 24 month projections are sound.
Okay.
I'm confident in that. But you're right, 36 months and beyond, you just got a good estimate. But that's why we use very conservative estimating in our projections.
All right. Anyone else have a question?
These are the three most important issues facing our community. And if I can be bluntly honest with you, this is what we need to be talking about. These three major issues for the next 12 to 24 months, we need to develop a plan. And everything else is pale compared to these challenges. I mean, this makes me nervous.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just forgot one other thing. And so we just passed a list of goals. You gave us about, what, 10? Did you give us 10 goals?
Yes.
Okay, is this reflected in those goals?
Yes, they are. These are the top 10 goals.
Okay, so we're already on it, right?
Yep. And we knew this, because we talked about, I kind of tapped on this a little bit when I first got here after my baseline assessment. None of this is new information, really. None of it's new. And here's the other thing I want to point out. This is not a Port Huron challenge. Like, this is, we are not unique to this. This is pretty much the same giant question mark that's haunting every community across the state, specifically core communities. And how do we address it? So we're, you know, to be quite frank, we're going to have to partner with other communities in what they've done, look at what they've done, share ideas, share knowledge. Because this is something that communities across the state of Michigan are facing with. And what my, what my goal is, is I intend to make Port Huron a leader in solving these problems. We will, we will find a way out of this.
Yes, we can.
I assume you're going to be bringing these in conjunction with the budget?
Yes.
Is that what you're planning on doing, is in conjunction with our talks on the budget?
Yes. But the unfunded liabilities question, we'll make a, in the budget, we'll address it with the $500,000 advance. But this is going to take a multi-year strategy. We're not going to fix this in six months or 12 months. We've got to develop a multi-year strategy for this one. It's going to be long-term, 15-year.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from council?
Just a comment, good. Thank you for pointing that out and stuff.
Yeah, and you know, I really wanted to take time to talk about our employees. Our employees have done so much, and they've sacrificed so much. And as city manager, I don't hear employees complaining. They don't complain that they're paying more out of pocket. They don't complain that they're paying more for their pensions. They don't complain that they haven't had raises in years. They do their job. They do a larger workload, and they do it because it really is about the service of the people of this community. And that I'm appreciative of. And, but I also want people to know that, again, this isn't like a Port Huron problem. This is a, this is a core community problem across Michigan, and we're going to solve it.
Not across Michigan, it's across the country.
It is.
Yeah.
And by, you know, we're looking at this five to 10 years out, and by having this conversation now, it gives us that time to actually be thoughtful about this and to be, to really dig into this. But I'm, the reason why I'm coming to you tonight is I know that this is a huge priority, and we are going to have to work together on it. I mean, this is, this is either going to make us or break us. We have to come together to solve this problem.
You may not hear the complaints from the employees, but I do.
I'm sure they're not happy about it.
Mayor Rep.
Thank you, yes, Councilmember.
Just one last comment. You know, we're talking about the employees and what they give back, and it's true, but these circumstances are really hurting us too, because with the stagnant wages and things in City of Port Huron, it's hurting us to hire quality people in some of our departments. And I think that's something else we got to look at, too.
It's absolutely a real issue, specifically in our Public Safety Department. When we post a job for a police officer in Troy, Southfield, all these other communities post the same job for $10,000 to $15,000 higher, it's hard to retain that talent. We actually have officers who have been here for three to five years who will resign and go 15 miles away to a different city where they make 10 grand more. And so it is a real issue. My concern is as well, is how do we retain institutional knowledge? There's a lot of operational things we do that you kind of, you learn on the job. And so the employees that have been there five to 10 years, they've learned a lot of this stuff. It's unique to a city operating budget and unique to city operations, municipal codes, all that. It's very different from private sector. I'm afraid we're going to lose that talent. And with the budget cuts, Councilmember Lewandowski, you talked about this before, we've hollowed out that pool, to pool from for future leaders. That is true. We cut out a lot of division heads in our operations for budget cuts to attrition. And now when we need department heads, we're missing that gap where you train and pull up. So that's the realities of the situation we're in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It's certainly nice to bring it to the forefront, even though we've all very much aware of it. It's good for the public to know that that's what we're going to be addressing over the next 12 months or so. We will move on to resolutions. Number one.
Is authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to enter into necessary agreements exceeding the city's current threshold amount without prior approval for musical acts for this year and future years Rockin' the Rivers event, as long as sufficient sponsorship funding is anticipated.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Amos.
What is the current threshold amount for that event?
Nancy Windsor will answer your question.
Mayor and City Council, the current threshold is the same as the city's threshold, which would be the 5,400, 400 now, right? The reason we're asking for this here tonight is many times we'll get, as we're getting bigger and we're getting more donations and this sort of thing, many times we'll have bands that will be what we call routing, which will be kind of close to Port Huron. And they'll say, hey, we're coming by you, but can you take on our act? It's difficult to make the on-the-moment decision when you got to wait two or three weeks. And then by then, they may be moving on to another community to say, because what they're basically trying to do is get as many acts in the area as possible. So also, many of our acts don't like their contracts public until we've actually signed with them. But I will guarantee, like I said, it would only be if we had monies to pay for the act, because this program always pays for itself with sponsorship, so.
Thank you. Mayor Rep. Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Whose fund does it come out of? You sign somebody but don't end up raising enough money to pay for them?
We usually, we always make sure that we have enough. We know what budget we're working with, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that. No, and we've had, actually, we're very, very fortunate, because we've had the same sponsors with us since the beginning of the program. So we feel very fortunate of that, too. So we kind of know what to expect for the upcoming year.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
And I know we've been doing this. How long have we been, the same resolution? How long have we been doing it?
Six years.
Six years, and you've been doing good for six years?
Yeah.
Yep, within there.
Yeah, the program always, and it just keeps, yeah.
Nice job.
Sponsorship is a little bit easier for this one than some others, so.
Because you keep proving yourself and, you know, coming out in the blacks. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You want me to sing? Is that what you said?
Stay up there. No, not singing. No, no.
Yes.
You do want me to sing?
Yes.
She might as well. She's offering.
She can, too.
Thank you, Nancy.
There's no other discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Number two.
Is accepting grant funds and approving the grant project agreement with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources in the amount of $45,000 to assist with the Black River Walk project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I'd like to first thank Nancy Windsor for getting this going. And the amount of things that are, that we've seen in our packet here was, is, just looks phenomenal. The only thing that I'm asking is, is being, we've got to start there, is if we would use the collaboration with the young professionals. The young professionals have started it, like you say, and...
Thank you for bringing that up, Mayor Rep and council. I cannot take credit for this. We, the YPs actually came to the city and said, you know, they had their master plan put together. So they came to me. I have written these grants before, so they're very, we worked together on this grant. So I can't take full credit through master plan. We're just trying to help get them to where they're trying to go, which is some really amazing things along the Black River. So it, we're working side by side with them, and they've been involved all the way through this grant as well.
And you have to admit, they're doing a great job.
Oh, yeah, they're doing a great job. And again, we're, I was just trying to, you know, be helpful to them, because a city has to apply for this type of grant, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mayor Rep, I've said this time and time again, but I am completely believe that the success our Parks and Recreation program is having, the reason why people like the YPs are willing to come work with us is because of Nancy's leadership. She is a community collaborator. She's constantly out there, and you sell the city, Nancy. So appreciate your work.
Thank you, with many others, so, thank you.
That she does. Thank you. No other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, item three under resolutions.
Is approving the agreement with General Code LLC to codify, maintain, and publish the city's code of ordinances.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tim Archibald. Is there discussion? I'll have to ask. So the municipal code didn't make it this time, huh?
Well, they were the highest of the four bidders that we had. They were at $16,950, and the current contract with the General Code would be for $10,150. And we were impressed with General Code's online version of the code, you know, it'd be the same verbiage, obviously. It seems, appears to be a little bit easier to maneuver around, and they give us a couple of more options about putting some other public documents along with the code that are pertinent to the code, like fees, applications, that kind of thing, right along with it with no additional cost, other than what the online cost is. So we're looking forward to working with General Code, and we think they'll do a superior job.
Very good.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
City clerk question, too. Why don't they just scan the actual code book and stick it online instead of trying to make you read the one that's on there? I've always found that one to be kind of annoying to try to find different stuff in it.
Well, I think you may find that it's easier with this new company. Is, it's a little bit easier. They also have an app that you can download on your smartphones and your iPads to make it a little easier to search. It has an index. I know, we struggle too, but we use it a lot more, so we get used to what the little struggles are. But just, just scanning it won't bring you all the results you need. So if you are looking for the term animals, it shows up in more than just the animals division, the chapter. So that would be one of the bad things with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, item four.
Is authorizing and approving the submission of the city's consolidated plan for 2015 through 2019 and the annual action plan for program year 2015 to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the review and approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Just a comment. I see that we had no, no comments during the periods that we have for people to speak up. And I'm remiss, because I didn't look at it till the last couple of weeks ago, but there's 111 pages of information, and some of it's repetitive, but some of it's, some of it's very interesting, is the fact that on page 21, it says that we have severe overcrowding, yet, yet we contradict that when we say we have Portland housing stock, we have vacant one-family homes, we had vacant apartments and things like that. Couple of the other issues I had was code enforcement. It sounds like the way the document's written is the code enforcement, and I'll emphasize this, is area of low to moderate neighborhoods. I don't think it's, that's right, these are only neighborhoods for code enforcement. I guess the other plan that I've seen here on page 108, it was to enhance the coordination between public and private housing and social agencies. And I think we'd be remiss not to mention, to get the public involved, the people that own property, the people that lease property, the people that rent property. I think these are a valuable part of that section of this agreement. And I guess, last but not least, is the fact that, what was the one I seen here? It was, made a comment, and I didn't write down the page, I went to page 33, but it says that we do not have specific areas with multiple, multiple housing problems and no specific areas of low income. And I think that's contradictory for the simple reason that we all know Port Huron has neighborhoods that have housing problems and we have income problems. And I just think that, shame on Ken for not doing a better job of looking at it the first time. And I think that it's, it's a valuable document, but lots to learn from it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on council who has any comments or questions? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.